Okay, welcome everyone. Today is November third, two thousand and twenty five. The time is currently five thirty one P M. This is a work session of the Philomath City Council. Going to call ourselves to order. And we'll start with a roll call by the city reporter.
Ms. Andrade?
Present.
Mayan Crocker?
Here.
Spencer Irwin?
Here.
Frank Caseman?
Here.
Ruzenison?
Here.
Richard Salton?
Present.
Christopher McMoran?
Present.
Wonderful. As a reminder, this work session is about our utility rate. Work that is ongoing. This is the follow up from our previous work session where we kind of identified which tools we wanted to use around utility rates and told our staff which of the different options we liked or which ones we didn't like, which ones we wanted to table. And now they've presented us with sort of a clearer picture, given the options we selected, what the actual costs would look like or numbers would look like. Recommendation. And then out of this tonight, I think we're looking for feedback as well as sort of a general direction of the council. Obviously, this is a work session, so we can't make final decisions, but we will look to at least kind of get a consensus around what we're thinking as well as addressing any particular issues any counselors might see in this. I think before we really dive in, I'll just say a couple of things. First is that I think it's really important for us to try to get the opportunity, at least for public input on all of this, since this is probably one of the things that affects the public the most that the council does. So I've talked to Chris a little bit about that and my hope is to, we have our counselor coffees starting up again this month. The first one will be on November fifteenth. And to like make that be sort of a specific, yeah, specific sort of like casual town hall. We're still going to call it a counselor coffee, but themed specifically around utility rates as an opportunity for people to come and learn more about sort of the process we've been going through, get feedback and then help explain kind of how utility rates work. I don't know about you all, but I feel like most people just sort of get a number and then they pay it. And there was the general public doesn't.
Some grumbling.
Yes, a hundred percent. But the general public doesn't always, you know, understand the breakdown and where those go, why those costs are the way they are, how that compares to other cities, et cetera. So using it hopefully as a two way street and then the next step after tonight, in addition to that, would probably be doing a public hearing on December. Is it eight?
Uh, it.
Yeah, which would be our, our first meeting in December. As sort of an actual more formal chance for members of the public to testify about their thoughts if they wish. And then at that meeting after the public hearing, we would probably take the more formal action on this. Obviously, you know, that's just a sort of preview timeline. Things can change depending on the council's thoughts and how everything goes tonight, but that's kind of where we're looking with that. I know at some point Chris and I had also talked about trying to get some more information just on the website. Sort of in general around how utility rates are chosen. You know, I feel like we've all kind of heard the the narrative that we just kind of pick a number and go with that, which as we know is not true, but I, I want to make sure help everyone else in our community see how we do this.
It's got to get out front of it.
Yeah.
Having to come back around and then defend something.
Yeah.
You're saying this is, this is where we're going here at the process. This is how we arrived here and then you had questions.
Yeah. So I just wanted to preface the conversation by saying that, that I, we've been talking a lot about it amongst ourselves and with our consultants and with our staff, but we certainly want the public to have the opportunities to. That will be coming during tonight, but with that, I don't know. Mike or Chris, if either of you want to walk us through this a little bit and then the council can discuss.
Can't walk you through the graphs. I've been putting together the general idea what they are.
Michael? Just to go on the mayor's comments, we're also looking at the, the summer newsletter, social media posts, the website. So there's definitely a concerted effort. Once we get to where we're at, to get it out from the public, hear from the public and still have some time. We can make changes as necessary and go forward. So definitely don't want to feel like whatever we decide tonight, that's it. This is what we decide tonight is what we're presenting to the public so that we can get some feedback.
I agree with Chris. The website, I also thought about doing an extra, maybe an extra billing or cycle, send this out all by itself.
Yeah.
I don't know how that would do. If that would be good or a bill, do they look at it? So that's why I think an extra one, Chris is right, put it on the website. And do an extra mailing for this particular item by itself. Definitely get it on the website. See if we got clear direction, which way we're going to go.
It does seem like the best way to get it to people that are going to have to pay it if they're already paying a bill. I mean, you're right, I don't know if they'll look at it or not, but at least you know that we sent it to pretty much everybody that needs to know it.
Yeah.
It's like a due diligence.
So can we send this with the water bill?
When we're ready, we can do it.
How often do we do a campaign of sorts where we inform our community about low income assistance? I know it's been on in the newsletter a few times, but do we ever do a campaign that really gets it out there? Do people that are newly unemployed or newly find themselves in more challenging financial situations?
As far as I know, we don't. But you know, everybody comes in that they used to have any kind of issues, they have a problem paying their bill. We do help them no matter what and we tell them we can send them over to We Care or, you know, or the other sources that we have. Or we are from the low income. So, yeah, but we don't, we haven't done a campaign on it. Maybe we do it this time around. I mean, we can make that part of it.
We're already going to do a, sorry, I couldn't buy.
He wants to disagree with me. Keep eating, keep eating.
No, as you can say, I think in my mind, it makes sense if we're already going to do kind of a public push about the process and the updates to just make that a feature of the.
Did you know?
Right, right.
Be helpful if we just, I was talking to an neighbor, more people becoming unemployed.
Right.
Which although they have some savings, savings eventually run out.
Yeah.
Be a good inclusion to what we're considering.
Um, I guess the one last thing I'll say just before we too far down this road is I think it'd be helpful for tonight for the council to really focus on the numbers and the substance sort of. I know I've already talked with Chris and then Counsel Andrade sent me a message earlier that we, we don't really like a lot of what some of the consultants wrote in here. So if you have problems with the language, so do I. So I think we'll, we'll tweak this, so just use this as like a placeholder kind of, yeah, yeah. Don't like, I, I think if you have specific thoughts, maybe send them to Chris or something and that. Yeah, I can work on kind of, you know, polishing this up and making it a little more useful and applicable to our community. But I think for tonight, it'd be helpful just if we mostly talk about the, the numbers and thoughts on the actual policy and how we talk about the policy later. But yeah. So with that, I guess staff, anything else before the council kind of deliveries a little more?
Just because it gets a little bit lost, the back page, page. Same page on the bill comparison, just the notes there again on. You have to be a little bit careful when you're comparing rates again, recognize that we're comparing the proposed new rates to current rates. And if other cities are considering their rates every year like we typically do, then it's kind of a new apples to old apples comparison, so just be aware of that. And then similarly, you know, some of these may be from last year, but that's the most recent we have. So it's apples and apples, but some of those apples are new and some are a little bit older. So just make note of that. And I think it really, it's just kind of where we're at now to where we're going and we kind of compare cities a little bit. So comparisons are helpful, but not overly.
Yeah.
Instructive, I guess.
I'll also say, I know we had a community member come in and share some information they've got on the internet about comparisons and I went down a rabbit hole with that. And which I'm still in, so I'll let you know when I come out of the. But they were comparing Philomath's utility rates to other cities in Oregon with a population between three thousand and ten thousand. And I think the list that they shared had, I think, twelve different cities on it. I think there are, there are forty six cities in Oregon that have a population between three thousand and ten thousand. So today, early in the morning, I started going in and Googling the utility rates for all of those cities and figuring out if you use five units of water. For some reason, that was what seemed like a lot of places gave. I know we used like ten units or something in ours, but what it would cost, some were easier to find than others. But just to go off of what the city manager was saying, I think the highest price I figured out was a hundred and ninety three dollars and the lowest price was forty three dollars. So there is a huge variety.
Even in that tier.
It does seem like, yeah, so I'm happy to share this when I'm done with it. Just if anyone's curious, I was, I was also just curious, which is kind of how I started, but but yeah, I think the, the comparisons are useful in some degree. I think the example I gave the city manager on Friday was someone I know who's looking to buy a home, texted me asking what I pay on my utility bill because they were comparing that with a home in Carvalis and it was a, you know, factor they were using in their decision. So I do think, you know, there, it, it's important to think about it, but it is also very sort of apples to different apples. Because some cities, you know, they invested a ton of money a hundred years ago in their water system and it's all working smoothly. And other cities found out that their well is poisoned last year and now they have to redo the whole thing. So it's, you know, it's a little hard to compare, but yeah, yes.
To clarify, your example, the, the range of, is that like peaking into account like base rate?
Yeah, that would be the amount of money you would pay every month.
Or water only?
No, that's just the amount of your utility to, so it would include, I think that's another piece of this, which obviously isn't in here, but like, you know, and then some cities have like public safety fee, transportation fee, turn of fee, everything like that. So so I think, as I mentioned earlier, I feel like most people don't really care. They just know how much they're paying every month. So I feel like that's what I was looking at through this. I will say some of the cities were a little unclear what all the different fees were that they charged, so I did my best. But yeah. So anyway, yes, with that, I will be quiet for a bit and turn it over to the council if people have thoughts. Counselor Crocker?
First of all, I did check on my water bill and it was twelve and eighteen units, but I do that every year, I guess. In the, to water it's going. So usually I'm down around two or three units, but I still have that same concern about bigger families that will use much more than our two member household. And that's a concern. I also would caution that this doesn't look very good, these graphs, because we're second out of all of them every time. And people will not be happy to see that we were at the bottom and now we're second for different reasons. That I think is going to stir up more concern or we maybe find some of those other cities to know where the water is. Third question. Are we free to talk to citizens about this now? I have not, but I will if it's, that we have.
Yeah, I mean, as a city councillor, you're, I feel like.
Some stuff is.
Right. No, yeah, this is all public. I think the only caution I'd give on that is just, you know, trying to avoid the whole serial meeting thing. Like it's probably best if you go out with the intent to learn what residents think as opposed to like promising how you will or won't vote or how other people will or won't vote.
Want people to be aware, that's what we're discussing.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, that is why we have elected councillors is to gauge the the mood of the community. So I think that's very fair. Yes, Counsel Selson?
So kind of along the same lines that I know that people, I know there's purpose of doing this, but honestly, I don't think it really serves at all. I think, I think the question is going to come up, but what is it going to, how's it going to impact us?
Yeah.
So they want to know where, where are we at and where are we going to?
Yeah.
That's going to be, that's going to be the biggest thing because we're paying what we're paying now. It's not like that's going to go down.
Yeah.
And we're, we're not going to be sisters. What I mean, we're, we're just not. So I think this is, I think this is kind of, I think this would confuse the thing more than anything else. I think that we stick to what's happening here and really, and talk about in some of the elements of why this has to happen. Then it just becomes simple math, you know? It's like, this is what, this is, this is the future. This is what we got to get to. Here's where we are and this is what it's going to take. Because I said, I, I just don't think it's very useful comparing even to Carvalis because it's, it's again, it's it's apples and oranges in that case, that their systems are, they're just not the same. You know what I mean? Not the same construction, it's not the same, anyway. And it just, my two cents.
Yeah, I think the comparisons were given more for the council. You'd have like where we were going. Definitely need to kind of promote those in any way. It was more just so you'd have an idea of if these are the things we enacted, then here's where we're going to fall.
But you know, I think it's because, by the way, Newport, last year, it went from this to this. That actually would have been like, okay, everybody else is sort of in that eight to 10% rise of fee, that's a bit more useful. It's like, okay, now we're consistent along what everybody else is kind of experiencing. I think that would be far more useful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which if I can go on a quick sidebar about Newport, we think we're in trouble because our water treatment plan is now four million dollars more expensive than we thought. Their dam is now like two hundred and fifty million dollars more expensive than. So you know what? Not that we're, not to make any excuses, but we're doing better than other places are unfortunately.
I get it, yeah.
As Mike, I'm sure knows.
Thursday last week, he told me the nightmare.
Yeah. At least four million is an amount we can make up. I'm not sure what Newport's going to do, but yeah.
To get back to the original question about kind of like the, the content, the numbers and such. Like we were saying, messages will come and especially once we fix that atrocious message at the back, that is also wrong. The tables are wrong. Some of them are at least. I guess I'd like clarification. I didn't get to read your responses, Chris, to my email. Looking for clarification. But I guess a lot of my so the main question I had was low income. I'm, I'm basing all of this solely off of like what's in the packet and did not look at the previous packets to try to figure out like what were the numbers that they, that Raftalus landed on.
The same question.
But I'm under the impression that we said, yes, we're keeping low income rates. I don't know if, how they're being changed, but in the table, it's showing the exact same rates as the monthly base charge for a non-low income residential single family.
So when we adopted the low income, it was on the volume charge or the base, the council at the time said to keep the base the same. But the volumetric charge would change. So we just, that's just not included here, so we just need to add the low income volumetric charge on the bottom of this.
Okay.
We've always kept the low income base fee the same as everybody else. It's on the volumetric that would reduce it down. But we can add that into this table. I, I did reply to your email, maybe.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I couldn't. I was trying to look through just now and like, nothing's blue.
I was going through and I was like.
There's no blue.
Colorblind in the last part of this. I figured eventually just like, context, it was like, is this correct? Not correct. And I was like, okay, that was Chris.
But then, yeah, so and then just like, of course, because we said we will redo this, just having, it's hard for me to kind of have like a good idea of, you know, what these numbers represent when they don't, I don't remember what the, the tiers are like the, but what is tier one up to five?
I believe so. We need to put those on.
You know, and so, yeah, I guess like, and the percent change from the previous bill is that like, is it a delta from what the current? You know, water bill is like March first, twenty twenty six to current, July first, twenty six, there are twenty twenty six to current, you know?
It's based on tiers and on the base charges. We, we need to break that up. We do this for the final product when we send it to the citizens. I'm going to change the layout of that so they can see base and then all the miscellaneous charges. And I'll just pull somebody's bill and set it up.
I think we probably pulled a one inch off of there too, so I think that's confusing. Just keep it a three quarter inch, so we're just up residential and then we have a section later that can deal with the, anything more than three quarter inch. Because again, I think it just adds confusion. Most people know they have a three quarter inch meter or one inch meter that just doesn't know the difference. So I'll just pull that one off.
Yeah.
Oh, stop note, yeah, like a different like look up, please contact the, look on the website. Yeah, exactly. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to say like, yeah, so I guess because we're approving numbers, that's.
Not today.
No, or approving numbers to give to the community to give feedback on.
Yeah, we really wanted to look at, and this is the first time you really see in the numbers.
Yeah.
Because you've made some policy decisions. This is the first time you're seeing one of those policy decisions. Me, the results of the, so we really wanted to just, again, that's why this work session, here's the numbers based on the policy decision you made. If we want, if we don't like the way the numbers look, let's tweak. We also asked them to make a recommendation on implementation schedule. And the recommendation is eighteen months. You go any further and you're just pulling the Band-Aid every six months for, you know, however long. So their recommendation is not any longer than that eighteen months. So you do the one in March and then go July, January, July, and then have the full implementation done. Or sooner, there's some, you know, they were like, do it all at once. There's some benefits, disadvantages of doing it all at once. It's a bigger jump, but it's one Band-Aid pool, right? It's like you give all the publicity, you put all the promotional information out, all the educational information, you do everything, you kind of prepare people and you implement. One pool, you're going to hear some negative feedback. People are going to be unhappy, they'll be disgruntled, but then six months later we're moving. Or if you do it over time, then every six months, we're going to hear the disgruntled. So there's some pros and cons. I mean, financially, as a household in Philomath, I like the idea of implementation over time. That's going to help our family budget, our personal family budget a little bit. But it does kind of open us up for some more longer period of time of potential disgruntled residents or business owners. So pros and cons, but we definitely want to hear your feedback on that, on what does the schedule looks like. I, I will just note before we get too far on the volumetric charges for that tier one, tier one is zero to six, tier two is seven to twelve and tier three is thirteen plus units. So we can add that in there, Michael, sounds like he's adding that.
Yeah.
But if you remember, we did talk about that in the tier one, zero on six, we actually do reduce down from six fifty five a unit down to five seventy a unit.
And I just want to highlight that because that's sixty nine percent of our water customers would actually have a lower rate if we pass this.
Which is substantial.
Would, yeah. So I just feel like.
A good thing to lead with.
Yeah. It's like, it's gotten very caught up in like raising the rates. I know like the base rate would go up, but like your usage rate, your volumetric rate, it almost seventy percent of users, that would decrease, which I just don't want that to get lost in the shuffle here. Which is the reason I like this system. Just, and just really quick before I call on Counsel Crocker, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Chris, if you have more. Okay, Counsel Crocker?
I want to clarify. If somebody is using thirteen units, they're not paying eleven forty for each unit. Are they, they're just paying the five seventy and then the eight fifty five, okay.
Yeah.
And I like the graduated steps. However, I think that needs to be published as one so that they know that it's going up, not just this is what it is now and in six months we're going to go up.
Sure.
Them to have this knowledge.
Counsel Selson?
On the heels of that, we're, we're, we're doing good tag team. Because I, that's, that's kind of where I was going with this. The one thing that we have to be very, very careful of doing graduated stuff that I, I agree that it should be all in one thing. So it is still one Band-Aid. But it's, you know, it's a, it's a bigger Band-Aid, right? Instead of a little bunch of small Band-Aids. But we have to be absolutely certain that we're not going to mess with that between now and the end of that schedule. You know what I mean? You know, like, you have to be very, very cautious.
Yeah, precise.
Yeah.
Well, we added in, just to respond, we made sure that we added in, in fact, on the sewer drain, I think there's a conversation in there. We wanted to make sure on that point that what would we normally go up anyway, just for inflationary costs, right? Like.
Right.
Employment costs are going to go up. Like we know that that's going to happen anyway. If this isn't reflecting that, then we're doing it wrong. And so that has been baked into that, so these.
That's important to note because people are going to look at it, I looked at this, I thought, holy smoke. I mean, all of a sudden, it's like, because you're not now talking about this much, now you're talking about this much. And I kind of, and I thought, wait a minute. If there's other factors already built in there that was going to happen anyway, we're just now defining all of it. Thank you for that.
And they are built in.
And to build off of that, I think making it clear, because I thought it was just inflation at the moment. I didn't realize it was like baked into that longer term period. And so making that apparent to others would probably, like being explicit about it would be helpful, I think.
And to make sure I was following, did you say that seventy percent of households may end up paying less? Well, so sixty nine percent of bills would be in the first tier. Like would be, so yes, so if we adopt this in March, sixty nine percent of bills, if they use the same amount of water they did this year, would be less.
In regards to just their volume, volume use, not according to.
No, their actual, their bill would be, if you look at water bill impacts, three quarter meter, usage, five CCF, March first, twenty twenty six versus current, it would go down one dollar and twenty five cents. But that's specifically because the usage rate would decrease while the base rate would increase. But for March, it would be a total of a slight decrease. And, and just the, the train of thought there, if this is ultimately to raise sufficient funds to take care of infrastructure in the future, could that actually be a problem? Where, I mean, that sounds great that a lot of people would be paying less, but if the intent is to raise sufficient funds to support the infrastructure, could that be a problem? I, that might be a.
It's short-lived, right? You don't market, but then in July, it's up three point nine or something.
Yeah. And it's offset because we were, if you use five CC, your bill would decrease two point five percent in March, but if you use twenty CCF. Your bill would decrease two point five percent in March, but if you use twenty CCF, your bill would increase twenty four point six percent. So it's. Right, yeah, yeah. Um, but I do, I, I do just want to clarify that. Um, the, the decrease in the volumetric rate is permanent. And it's the, like, that, that will be a, like, you will decrease it from six fifty five to five seventy, and that will stay five seventy until. At least July of twenty twenty seven. So, yeah, so it's the base rate that slightly goes up every year. Volumetric rate. Um, yes, Councilor.
Is it fair to talk about the sewer, the volume charge? So. They're gonna be charged for water coming in and water going out if it's a higher volume? Is that what this is telling me?
Where are you looking?
Under sewer, it's a volume charge per unit of water consumed. It's currently eight seventy five and then it's going up from there to nine fifteen.
Yeah, the, I, and certainly I'm wrong on this, but that's. We calculate the sewer volumetric usage based on the winter water usage. So if you use. Three units of water a month in the summer or in the winter, we'll charge you for three units of sewer a month year round. So even if you use fifteen units in the summer watering your yard, we only charge you the three units of sewer because.
Well, that, yeah, it doesn't say that. And is that a new, do we have, do we currently charge for volume?
We're just keep, we're not changing the structure of that at all, just the prices. Yeah.
That is.
The only thing we've built in the sewer is the inflation, just because we know that it's gonna cost a little bit more. So. Otherwise, the, the recommendation from the consultant was sewer's good. You guys are getting money, you're putting money into land to equipment every year. The sewer fund's pretty healthy, but it's like, well, yeah, but we're still gonna see inflationary increases. It's still employee costs are still gonna go up. That's, you know, half of what is going in there for sewers is maintaining the sewer. That's employee costs and that's gonna go up. So that's, again, that's built in. We didn't wanna say, oh, sewer's flat.
Yeah.
And then a year later, like, oh crap, our employment costs just went up three percent. We didn't do anything in the sewer. So again, it's, it's baked into this. So once we get this set and approved. That's what it'll be set at least through July twenty seven. And before then, we'll know. What is July twenty eight gonna look like? We'll know that in July twenty seven.
Um, why does the non-residential not have a volume chart?
He does.
The volume chart, it's just halfway. Oh, then because it's for multi-residential and commercial, like it's two separate.
That's a title.
Even though they're, even though they're exactly the same. How, I don't understand how that could confuse you at all.
Councilor Crocker's point also about the, like, the way that sewer rates are calculated, I think that is just important. Like, if we're going to be doing information, like giving information about this, that it's something we did. Include in there, especially like when you explicitly see the nine, uh, CCF of water to. Five CCF of sewer like that. I mean, I know we're not putting this out and also, yeah, just raises questions.
Just explaining what we currently do a little bit.
Exactly.
Because not everyone knows that.
Uh, just because of the, yeah, the unit of water consumed is misleading. And then also I'll just, of course, the charge. Um, multiplied by the number of units, multiplied by half is no longer a thing. In the table. Sorry, sewer rates? Yeah, next to multi-residential. I mean, I'm sure.
I think I'm kind of a bottom line person in regards to certain things and. I didn't really love this packet, can I just tell you? It was really confusing and hard to juggle and wrap my head around and like everyone else. It was just not. Helpful. I felt I came more confused than I was before I got the packet. But that notwithstanding, um. This one sixty nine forty six and the one thirty six oh five are representative of, is this the. July twenty seven rate, the one sixty nine forty six representative of an average bill? So we're talking about a twenty five percent increase. Over what it is currently, because it's, the difference is thirty three forty one, which is about a twenty five percent increase over two years. And for me, I'm with, um, Councilor Caseman. I would want to know, is this a trend? Do I, do I then prepare in twenty seven? Are we gonna have another twenty five percent increase? So that makes. You know, is this trending or are, what are we? What's our expectations for? And I know we don't have a crystal ball, but. Our finances for most people are pretty finite. It's like, I don't get a twenty, well, maybe get a twenty five percent raise. I don't get a twenty five percent raise.
I get a twenty five percent raise as mayor every.
Nothing from nothing is likely.
Yes, but do you see how that's kind of disconcerting as far as regarding? I don't like the idea of having, yeah, we're doing a twenty five percent increase of your utilities. I see the need and I understand, but to me, it's a hard pill to swallow and I could swallow a little bit more. Graciously, if I knew this wasn't a trend of twenty five percent and another twenty five percent and another twenty five percent and onward.
We can, we can, again, with the narrative on water. Definitely do more to emphasize that this is in large part a result of the new water treatment plant. Which isn't paid for by or built for new development. It's because. Philomath residents have used that plant for thirty plus years now. We've worn it out and we, the residents need to replace it. There's a cost associated with replacing that plant. It's more than the twelve million dollars we got from the state. It's now at the sixteen million dollar mark. So that four million dollars. Needs to come from our ratepayers. And it's not fair to put on new development because it's not the new developers that have worn out the plant. It's the residents that are here. So. Um, we can do better job of explaining that in a little bit nicer terms, obviously. It's essentially, it's the, it's the. The utility ratepayers, our current residents and business owners that need to help replace the cost of the existing plant with the new plant. Future development will pay for the expansion of the plant as the plant will be built larger. And with more capacity for more racks and things in the future, future development and future residents will pay for that additional. Expense, but this portion of the plant that we're talking about, this four million dollars is really just replacement of the existing plant. With like kind. Now, are we building a plant the exact same size as the existing one? No, we're, we're bigger and we're gonna be bigger. It doesn't make any sense to build. A water plant the exact same size as the one that we have, because we know we're going to grow. So there is some upsizing there. But that is where a lot of the system development charges that are paid by developers is gonna go into it. So. I don't want to get in the weeds too much with residents. I think the narrative is pretty simple. Just say. Our thirty year old plant is worn out and it's time to replace it and utility ratepayers. Need help pay for it. We went to the state legislature, we were able to get twelve million dollars to help offset. A large part of that. Otherwise, we would have seen these increases much, much earlier, right? In fact, we did see these increases earlier and we dropped rates back down when we got the twelve million dollars. Rather than keep rates up where they would be. I mean, we'd be. Without running the numbers, we would probably be close to these numbers right now. And stock, we'd probably be at these numbers now, but the fact is we reduced them down. We've known we had that dollars and we've kind of very slowly been going up. And now this is the correction, kind of the course correction to pay for the cost of that plant. And in the meantime, just to add insult to injury, we know what inflation does and construction costs have done. And this has been. In my lifetime, unprecedented. The amount of, the cost of building a water plant. Or any other infrastructure, public infrastructure, has gone up so much in the last five years. I don't think that I could, in my lifetime, I can't think of a time when that's happened, right? My life's not that old. I'm not that old, but. But it's, it's been pretty substantial. What inflation's done, cost of labor, parts, equipment, everything else. So. Unfortunately, from the time that we got the money to build the plant to the time we're ready to build the plant. That cost has gone up four million dollars. And so unfortunately, residents, that's gonna fall on residents to do. Um, we're going to, you know, that money is not just money that's sitting in the bank account already waiting for us to spend. We're gonna have to borrow that money. And build the plant and then we'll have a debt that we'll need to pay. And so as we are collecting this money from residents. That money is gonna go every year. We'll start seeing in the budget, we're gonna see a debt payment for that four million dollars. We're gonna have to borrow that money. It's gotta come somewhere. We don't have it. So, um, this isn't. Raise more money today for a future expense. It's, we have a current expense. We need to raise money so we can pay off the debt we're gonna have to go into in order to get that expense done, because we can't delay the construction of our plant any longer. It has to get built now. Um, so we can have that language in here. It's, it's definitely very, very skinny about the plant. There's a little bit in here about the plant, but then it kind of ends. So. Well, that's more in the narrative, beef that up a little bit more. The second that we're kind of deals more is about, you know, other factors, including operational costs, inflation, ongoing. Repairs, maintenance, and that's fairly minor. That's a very small percentage of the increase. Most of this increase is.
Physical cost.
Yeah, it's those costs. So, and. Once the plant's done, we've got a whole other list of capital projects need to be done. The cost of those projects has also significantly increased from when the water master plan was first created. And so we know. Although we, we scheduled it out for twenty years, these are the projects need to be done for the next twenty years. The reality is, we can't afford to do all those projects in twenty years. And so. You know, we're not just marching down the road. This is for you more than for this. We're not just marching down the road saying. You know, there's no inflation, there's no, you know, increased costs. We have a plan, we're just following the plan. You know, we don't care where the cost is. That's not at all the case, but the water plant absolutely has to get done now. Once we pass water plant, we'll be taking a hard look at our capital improvement plan and saying, okay, what projects do we absolutely have to do? What products can be pushed out? And, you know, do we have to do it right now? Or can we defer some of that maintenance, defer some of that down the road? Because we know. That we're not gonna be able to do another big substantial increase. And we can't just pretend that the world hasn't gotten more expensive. It has for these households. So. Um, again, I think we addressed the narrative. I understand that this is not, um, you know, every three years we're gonna see these types of increases. This is a once every thirty year increase to pay for the treatment plant. And, and I don't necessarily want to remind everybody that we reduced rates substantially a few years ago.
I'm fine with that.
Um, but maybe that is part of the narrative is, you know, back in twenty seventeen, these were the rates. We bumped them up significantly. By twenty twenty, we got the money from the legislature in twenty twenty. The twenty two?
Yeah.
Twenty twenty two, and then we reduced our rates back down from twenty twenty two rates, back down to twenty seventeen rates. I remember twenty eighteen rates. I'll have to look at the numbers, sorry. Um, so we saved residents quite a bit of money during that time. In the meantime, expenses gone up, and then we've discovered again that now the cost of the plant went from twelve to sixteen. And so that gap has grown. In the meantime, we've had the rates where they needed to be to take on a four million dollar. Debt payment.
I will say too, I mean, I, I think, I don't, I do think the fact that the council previously. Decreased the rates is an important thing for the community to know, not in as much of like a. Like, see what we did for you. But just, I mean, because I've had people ask me, you know, the narrative of like, oh, well, we have to increase the rates to pay for the thing. And it's like, well, when's the last time you decreased the rates? And I'm like, we literally just did like, because I think it just. So I think it just helps people understand like the rates are directly tied to costs. And if costs go down. We have and do lower rates. And if costs go up, we have and we do increase rates. And I think just. Helping people see that we're not just like, you know.
Twenty percent?
Right, it's every year it has to go up by a blank amount. You know, we do, like, this is a. Intelligent, thoughtful process where we examine how much things are gonna cost. And if we're charging too much money, we reduce it. If we're charging not enough money, we. So I think just passing that along to folks is helpful. And not to mention the fact that like, you know. We do look for creative ways to help pay for this. We went to the legislature and asked for support. We didn't just. Immediately be like, well, guess, guess everyone has to pay for it. And that's the way it is. Um, I do think just helping people understand that can help, you know, build some trust in process that, that we aren't just. Making stuff up as we go.
One decision.
Right, yeah. The, I'm, I'm gonna go with Councilor Irwin and then Councilor Crocker.
Uh, I am looking at the last couple entries on the storm fees. And I'm just wondering, like, are we gonna get a call in March from the guy that has a. Millions. I mean, is somebody gonna be, that's like, that is a huge jump. Do we even have that?
I don't believe we do. I think our biggest is like the. Seven. Value areas at like forty thousand.
I agree.
So that's pretty, that's a pretty wild outlier, like that would be a thing. A million.
Like a Costco.
Yeah.
What about the lumber mills?
It's impervious surface, so it's got asphalt and buildings. So the lumber mills, you have the buildings, but. They're relatively small compared to the footprint of the mill itself.
Gravel in between the.
Yeah, the gravel doesn't count.
The rest of that is more palatable. I just imagined an angry. I know, mill, actually, to be totally transparent, calling to say, hey. This is wild and, you know what I mean?
But they'll get the notice like everybody else is gonna get and they'll, you know, they can do the math and. When you get the complaints, again, without being too tongue in cheek, it's like, yeah, we've, we've been subsidized, like everybody else has been subsidizing you. This is a much more equitable way to do it. It means that you end up paying more of your fair share. And, you know, I guess they can pack up and leave if they don't like it, but I don't think anybody will. They're just gonna have to absorb it into their budgets and. And increase costs of their products, increase cost to everybody else and, and make that work. But. Them doing that means that, you know. Jessica and Rich are having to pay more to subsidize the industrial. Place that's down the road that's got a huge footprint and is, costs more to their, take care of their storm. So. It's more equitable and I think that's what you've got to lean on. It's just like. We had consultants, they looked at it and they determined. And looking at it, that it was unequitable, that we were having smaller households and smaller businesses subsidize the larger ones. The councilant felt that was fair, and so they've evened it out. And so now it's very proportional. The more you are, the more that you pay. The proportions are correct now and.
Yes, I imagine an increase in questions overall about kind of all the stuff we talked about, like how is. Uh, storm and sewer calculated, all that stuff. And so. I guess I'm just saying out loud that it would be amazing for me if I. Was able to confidently direct them. Probably to the website or whatever, but I, between having to explain the methodology of doing this. But then I'm gonna imagine most people don't actually know how their bill is calculated either, maybe not most, but. I think there's a large percentage of folks that go, oh, it's fifty bucks. Okay. You know, like, I mean.
transparency is awesome.
Yeah, and so, uh, I think that it would go a long way to be able to be like that. Well, the city, we just put up a nice thing on the website. It explains how everything's calculated.
Be great. My question is, if we rip off the Band-Aid and just jump to the increase, we're gonna be making more money. Obviously, over the next two years. Um, does that mean we can bring that cost down a little bit? So like, sixty five or what?
Sixty or something.
To clarify, we'll be making the amount of money that we're supposed to be making sooner. As opposed to making more money overall.
Grades like this from the beginning, but it's still gonna be a grade. It just, they've gotta get that ramp there.
Maybe it does be interesting to know what would be best overall, um, whether we're poking for increases every. Or whether we just do, okay, this is what we need and this is a percentage and it's just so hard to know what is best rather than. Like, it's a hard piece.
I love the idea of giving that decision to the community and having them come to a town hall and voice whether they would rather. Just start off and pay it all or whether they wanna gradually done. Then they would feel some ownership. If they got the option between the two, then they felt that. It's very similar to what it would come out anyway, but at least they feel like they got a voice.
I will say, it's like. I will say, it's like, I was recently in the car for a while with Commissioner Shepard from the county commission, who is a former Carvallos City Councilor. And I mentioned to him that we were doing this whole rate process. And that was all I said. And then without prompting, he said, oh, my God, make sure you don't do that thing where you phase it in because everyone hates that. And I said, and so I just promised I would share his thoughts. Because I guess when he was on the Carvallos City Council, they did a similar thing, phased it in over probably 18 months because they probably had reptiles. But he was just saying sort of to that point that he felt like at least it caused more anger in the community because it was like, oh, you just raised my rates and then you just raised them again, and then you raised them again, and then you raised them again. So I don't, you know, obviously, I'm not trying to say their experience would 100% be our experience, but he just had very strong feelings on that, that were clearly burned into his memory from his time in Carvallos. And no one cared. So that's the thing, but I know, I just love how I didn't even mention anything about phasing it in. And he was like, oh, God, don't do that.
Both ways.
Right.
Like, if you look at your bill, you're so you only got about in a can, if it went up 30 bucks in between a month, it's like, oh, you know.
But I mean, I do think that that's an important question for us to ask like at council coffee or at the, if we do like a town hall or public hearing, just like that, you know, because it doesn't, it doesn't make too big of a difference to us either way. If people would rather just get it over with or they would prefer phased in, yeah. And I mean, I think maybe a lesson from the Carvallos example, like maybe if they had done more public outreach ahead of time and people knew that that was happening, maybe that could have helped alleviate some of that surprise that the bill kept going. So maybe that's, you know, maybe that's part of the lesson isn't that it's a bad idea, but it's that maybe we need to go about it.
Right, you know, and 30, the other thing I thought is three-year phase in is makes them a much subtler.
You get a lot of education too.
Yeah, sure.
That's why, three, let's get this thing out.
Yeah.
But like Counselor Sals says, let's get in front of it.
Yeah.
And we educate them and
Yeah.
maybe it won't be as bad.
Easy with the counselor, I got him.
Yes, everything. And going back to calculations, yes, definitely having that information available will be illuminating for people insightful. I don't know, words. The other question, oh, what do so do we know what the low income rates are for water? Because it's not on here.
Yeah, it says 1821.
No, 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 not the base rate. Is that the exact same volumetric rate? Because one of the things before, especially when I thought that there was only that there wasn't effectively a low income rate as per this table. Seeing the city and school irrigation rates so low. I comparatively, I would like more information on that. I know we've, there's some information has been brought in the past, but I like seeing what these numbers are in that context would be helpful and trying to figure out like, well, how equitable is this when it's irrigation? And it's not like water for people to, I just I'd be curious.
I have a sneaky suspicion that tier one is low income. I never just, they forgot to include it, but I will look that up. Now, the school irrigation, now that's a different animal itself. When I first got in here, I raised that thing up to like $3 and had my head cut off.
That's true.
It's something that council gets set up over the years, whereas the school gets a base rate to pay the water, the football and soccer fields.
Yes.
And so you, that's, I'm not gonna give you.
That's a very policy.
That's a policy.
No, I understand that. I just, and I understand that, like, those things are important for like supporting the youth and everything. And also, if we're talking about making things more equitable, I don't know if a 50 cent increase is that equitable.
They use 12,000, they average 12,000 units for the three months that they irrigate. So that's a lot of bucks. So.
During the June to September? Okay, thank you.
12,000 a month or?
1,000 units.
But during that time period.
During that time period, it's not four, for each bunch, four. It was quite a bit.
I would say though, that if we up the prices, we're gonna end up paying anyway, because the schools will have to raise their tax rate. So pay for it. So we can justify that by saying we're all paying for the water and do we really want to raise it on ourselves?
Yeah, no, I understand that. I, I guess we don't know if they would though, if they would raise that or if they would adjust. Anyway, I don't know anything about this school and everything. I just wanted to evaluate, like have better context to kind of evaluate what this looks like in equitable. So.
I will say when we accidentally increased the school rate, I also got a very angry call from the red calls. But I mean, I hear what you're saying. I do. I just, yeah.
Like to revisit it on the off chance that something has changed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm very much in favor of having discounted school late, but maybe it doesn't need to be as steep, like, you know, like a dude, $3 instead of $2.
Well, I just, like, when you look at it compared to like tier one being, you know, it's not even half of tier one. And so that's kind of the, and also again, like, and activities. So again, it's very much a yeah, like you said, a policy decision.
Yeah.
I have a question and I, and I think you told me not to do this. Modest surcharge for the uphill, I don't know, it's not known. It says one underwater, a modest surcharge, what is this surcharge? And the word modest probably offends me.
It's on this page at the top, the next page.
What is it?
It's the elevation. 75 cents. I will
75 cents.
I will note though, it is unclear if it's per unit or.
Thank you. Modest to me might not be modest to someone. Biggs didn't come in the calendar, everything's going up.
Be careful about what adjectives to use. Reevaluate those.
Monumental probably would not be a good word. Is simply a 75 cent surcharge would suffice. Sure and not. Judge mentioned.
Okay. So we have about like 20 minutes left in the court session. Are there any outstanding, like, questions about just sort of where we move on this for staff? Then if not, I guess I want to talk a little bit about kind of next steps. Do we all feel comfortable with the plan of doing like the council coffee thing and then doing the public hearing? Is there anything, I mean, you know, putting something up on the website, maybe making a video or something? Is there anything else that we all feel like would be helpful? I know it was mentioned of like, sorry. Like, and part of it was, Chris and I were trying to figure this out, you know, doing a more like formal like town hall instead of just the coffee. I'm game for that, but I think the reason I landed on the coffee idea was just that in the past, town halls have not been hugely attended or helpful. And since the council coffee is kind of a, you know, existing cadence, not that we always get a huge attendance at those either, but it it's something that already happens, people already know about, and it's a little more, you know, friendly, casual, not like.
Not afraid to tell you what.
Right, yeah, yeah.
More opportunities also.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess I just wanted to ask that kind of correct. Just broadly like, or are there any other ideas counselors have on ways we can engage the public or anything else between now and December 8th that we want to do with this? I have a counselor chomping at the bit.
Brad's food farm writing an article. And then we put, can we do a survey movie or something online? If you have a, an opinion, one way or the other, please go to this link and vote. Share your opinion.
But are you talking about between, like, what would the choices be?
Between graduated or?
We're all at once. Okay.
It's not an option to not.
You want $1.50 from me today or you want $1.50 from me over the next year and a half? Did it over the next year and a half all day long, right? It's like, I'll keep my money in my pocket as long as I can. But I think it's really more about, frankly, it's really more about you and staff and how long do we want to be fielding questions, hearing from constituents? I think that's really the bigger concern that they I may be wrong, but my hunch would be residents and businesses would all say make my bill as small as possible as long as possible.
But then if we do that, they can't complain when we raise it every six months because they'll understand. Yeah, a lot of people.
And I really do think if we can really get on top of like sending a letter out to everyone, getting the word out, doing an event, like just, I think the problem Carvallos ran into sounds more just like a yeah, it sounds more like a just lack of anticipation. Sounds like an actual problem with the program. Like, I don't know if we could even like put on a water bill like asterisk, you know, rates will increase on March 1st, 2026, July 1st, 2026. I don't know, which is something like that where it's like.
Put a header right on the top of it.
Something, yeah. Yeah, okay. Yes.
I think you said a second ago, video, you've seen the power of video and things can go relatively viral, you know? And so I think a part of it also is how it's framed and showing the positive nature of this. So if you kind of focus on your bills are going up again, yes, that's true. But I think if you were to go out, for instance, take a, take a video next to the new, or, you know, kind of show that, you know, Philomena is growing and we want to offer all these to have more of a positive perspective on it and the power of video. So I liked your idea. Appreciate it.
And
And I was just gonna say, I think really it is about education. Giving that narrative out there that is clarified so they're not having to second guess or make those assumptions that we tend to jump to right away. Oh, they just want more money. They just want me to change in that narrative, change in the scope of their understanding, I think can make a big impact. And using social media, using information and the city will provide on the website. I think that is hugely helpful.
Think it's worth noting that it really is a single rate increase in phased implementations, even though the rates they're going, I mean, I guess it's technically at my definition, an increase every time, but like the idea is that this isn't like, oh, six months later, we're like, oh, actually, we're gonna bump it up again. This is like, we needed to be here and so we're increasing the rate from here to here, but in order to make it easier to adjust to, we're gonna do it over a period of 18 months or whatever period.
One of the things that will help that narrative is, you know, we're gonna start construction of the plant, but it's gonna take a year to construct and then it's gonna be another several months after that to do the switch over and to decommission the existing one. So really, it's, I mean, it's not day for day, but it's kind of like by the time the plant is done and operational and we'll have to have paid for all of it, that's when we need the rates to be where they need to be. The reality is if we can get all the money this year, then that'd be even better, but we're gonna have a debt service. We're gonna need to pay it off over some time. This increase will allow us to pay that debt service off. You know, as we go forward, but it kind of lines up with finishing construction of the plant. I don't have a solid data on that yet because we're not under contract at that base, so.
Yes, counsel, it's awesome.
Is there any way on our existing website to have a landing page that would be specific for this initiative? Right? So it would have basically the narrative text, this sort of broken down and a little calculator that somebody could take their existing utility bill, plug in what they are paying today and say, this is actually, because that's what people, people go crazy. They're trying to do the math and they either way overguess or they way underguess and then they're shocked when they see their first water bill. You know what I mean? Like, it's like, they can actually, that actually gives them the power of like, this is what, this is what this is happening. And I'm just looking at from the logistical sort of view of being able to do that on a website. I don't know if we have that much technology and the webmaster.
I have been thinking.
You know what I mean? Just a very simple little calculator. And then that, again, that just gives people more more information about this is what it's actually going to look like.
Right, right.
I would do, I would use it. I'd be, you know, I mean, I could use a calculator and figure it out myself, but.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, if we can, that's great. I don't know.
I can download stuff off of my general ledger and I know there's a program that we can get from Cassell that goes into utility billing. So I have been thinking about that, counselor. It is something in the back of my mind that'd be great to have set up.
I think on the note of video and broader communicate, I feel like the other thing I really want us to communicate with this is this isn't just a rate increase, like that we are kind of redoing how we do utility, like you know, we are tiering it and we're changing how we assess stormwater by, you know, square foot, you know, like this, the council has decided to kind of completely redo our utility rate infrastructure. And then as part of that, here's what the new rates will be. But like, you know, the rates go up every year a little.
And we know it's gonna go up.
Exactly.
Now in a comprehensive and equal way that.
And I think again, helping people understand like this is a very thoughtful process that we go through. And especially this year, like we are really thinking critically about the way we assess utility rates and is that the right thing to do? So.
Conceptional change.
Right, right. And I just think going over some of that, like, you know, now, depending on what elevation you live at, there may be this surcharge. And if you only use however many thousands of gallons per month, your rate will actually go down. And if you use
Well, it would be in line to with what they're seeing on their electric bill.
Right, right.
Or that, you know what I mean? Where you've got, you use so many kilowatts and it's this rate, you're gonna lose this many kilowatts at this rate. That's, it's consistent now with the utility industry as opposed to, you know, yeah.
Well, and realistically, increases are have, I mean, like Chris said, everything costs more nearly every day, like nearly day upon day is, you know, so it's like, I think it's kind of unrealistic to think that as things, everything dramatically gets more expensive, that all the with all the going to providing a water service, that it would just be the same forever. So I think most people will get that.
Yeah. Okay.
I think we're used to it now. I guess it may be conditioned for it, like it's like, yes, what? The cost of this thing is going at all. Whoa, no way. Yeah, like.
Can I ask about December 8th, the public hearing? I've got on my calendars, we have an executive council meeting down. So what, you know, what's happening at the public meeting?
It'll be part of our regular meeting. Yeah, we just started the meeting at seven and we'll probably start with the hearings. Do that first.
Like we do for like land use hearings.
And obviously we'll try to keep through. And obviously we'll try to keep the rest of the agenda fairly light. So there's things that can bump over till January. I'll work with the mayor on just trying to keep that meeting otherwise light. Um, yeah, and it just, you know, when we started this process, um, I believe I'm quoted as saying anywhere, anytime you change utility rates, you just got to have thick skin. And it's you will, we will have a lot of individuals that are going to pay more and it's going to hurt. And they're going to come to you and they're going to complain about it and it doesn't really help to say, yeah, I feel for you. I agree with you, but I'm going to vote against you anyway, right? Or I got to vote for this because I have to. As Chris says, I have to, so I got to vote for it. It, you just, you're going to have to just have thick skin. We're going to do everything we can to have you have the information that you can pass on to explain why we're doing what we're doing. And all you can do is really just commensurate with them. Say, yeah, I agree, you know? And again, remind, like, I live in town too. And you know, I'm voluntarily having to raise my own utility rates because it's the right thing to do for the city. We have expenses. Our cities well run. We've got great staff at Public Works that are doing projects well and overseeing the things and the costs have gone up and we hired outside consultants, so we're not biased, right? We got third parcels looked at everything there and figured out said, hey, you're you're not, your billing is a little bit different than kind of the norm. We're going to correct some things. We're going to add in some water conservation. We're going to do some, some things to kind of bring you in line with industry standards on what most other cities are doing. And then there's a cost associated with that.
Yeah.
So, you know, we'll, we'll arm you as best that we can. And I'll apologize upfront that you're going to take some heat over this and the best we can do is just weather through it and help educate and and I'm going to the video, at least we're not Toledo.
One, like two more rows of expenses.
We could add, I mean, there's. Sorry, Brian. I'm not, and it's like comparables. Yeah.
I think it's just two sort of spots for me. First of all, yes. I do like, obviously, you know, there's a bunch of different comparables. I do, I do think like we will increase our rates and we will be closer to the top after you do this. And I, I just think we do need to internalize that, that that is a genuine concern and people will pay more. Regardless of how we sort comparables or whatever we do, it's, you know, painful. Um, and then second, if we're going and doing throwbacks to what we said at the beginning of this process, um, I think the other thing I always remind myself and community members of is that they own our water system. Like we, all of us own the system. It's not like we as the anointed by God city council have the holy right to the water system. Um, it is owned, it is owned by everyone in the community and it is everyone in the community's responsibility to maintain the thing that they own, right? If your car gives out and you need to buy a new car, that's going to cost some money. Um, but you, you know, it's just an expense that we have when an old thing that we own needs to be replaced. And I think that's how I think about this a lot too, is this isn't like us just, you know, raising rates so we can go on some fancy trip or so we can, you know. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, but this is, this is everyone in the community chipping in to maintain and improve a system that they own, just like they would chip in to maintain and improve their home or their car or their property. So this is their property. Um, and we are just tasked with doing all the homework and then um helping them kind of get to where they need to be so that not every single person in town needs to spend however many five different hour and a half long work sessions and how many other hours at home reading through all of this. That's, that's our role is just to be entrusted by the community to use their resources to take care of their property. Um, but I just think I like to sort of remind myself of that, that like this is not the city's system. Um, it belongs to every single person there and everyone has a responsibility to it. So with that, any other thoughts before we recess for a little bit or adjourn, I guess, so Crystal doesn't get mad at me? Nothing? Okay, then um it's currently six forty, oh, last thing. On the note of council coffee, we should figure out how we want to do this. Usually we can't have more than three people there. I know this is an important issue. I think if we want more than three people there, we might be able to figure out some way to do some kind of public notice thing, but
Sure.
Um, so I just wanted to figure out who's interested in it.
Did you say the fifteenth?
Yes.
I'll be in Newport then.
I'll be in Hawaii.
Sorry.
Um, it's nine thirty to eleven is usually, I think, when we do it.
On the
On Saturday, November fifteenth.
Who's interested? You? Are you interested?
One.
And Jessica.
Two.
I think I can make it.
Three, okay, so maybe four.
We'll just notice it. We'll be promoted anyway.
Right.
So we'll just notice it as a, uh, have a form there.
Okay, awesome.
And are we going to do signups again for future months so we can get our?
Yes, I'll send out a, uh, do the poll for December. We'll see. What is the Thursday weekend in December? So that's literally like Christmas Day because.
Twenty, twenty. My second.
Okay, we could do that. Um, I will send, I will send the poll for but just for November, we'll plan on probably the four of us and okay. Anything else? All right, uh, it's currently six forty-seven PM. We'll adjourn this work session and we'll return at seven PM for our regular. Actually get like, it's a little break.